Welcome everyone to the Tuesday, August 26, 2025, Tom Water City Council Work Session. And I believe we have everyone, but I have not seen Michael Alt Hauser. Oh, he's, he's here. He's just not on camera. So with that, we will dispense with roll call. And then go ahead and we'll start up with the 2025 Cons- Comprehensive Plan Periodic Update, the Land Use Element. And before we get started, I'll turn it over to staff, but as many of you have seen today, we've been getting a lot of emails with people making public comment. And just a reminder, we do get emails, but we don't do public comment in work sessions, but we do in council meetings. So, but we wanted to let the public know we have received all of their emails and been forwarded to council members. All right, with that, Dana, are you doing the presentation? All right, I will turn it over to you.
Yes, thank you so much. Good evening, everyone. For the record, I'm Dana Bowers, Associate Planner at City of Tom Water. And thank you so much for inviting me tonight, and I'm glad to present to you the draft of the Land Use Element, uh, Land Use Element for the 2025 Comprehensive Plan. So let me share my screen. And then I'll have to just start the PowerPoint, so bear with me. I forgot this has to be done in a specific order. My apologies. All right. And then as I share screen, oh, I still do have a little ribbon of you, so I can see certain folks. If you have a comment, please let us know, or I mean, may or I'll ask that you let me know if there's a commenter or some handout because I won't be able to see everyone.
Yeah, not a problem. I will do that.
All right. Can everyone see my presentation?
Yes, we can see it.
I see, Nadine. Great. Again, good evening. Thank you so much. And we're just, this is the first time you've seen the Land Use Element in its draft form. I wanted to just acknowledge that this is two years' work, two plus years' work in the making, and that conversation started on this topic in 2023. And thank you so much for participating in that and sending your comments in when we were reviewing the goals and policies, and that work has been included in this draft and just glad to put it all together for you. So I wanted to start tonight with just acknowledging that we have a few different pieces that go into the plan. And we do have the Part One of the Plan is the Goals and Policies. And then Part Two of the Plan is the Technical Information. I'm gonna do more review of the technical information tonight because that is the why behind the Goals and Policies and provides you with the, um, the data and the best available science for those goals and policies. So and we are absolutely taking comments and discussing all parts. So don't hesitate if you have specific questions about the goals and policies and we'll, we'll cover that as well. So we're gonna talk about state requirements for this element, the forecast data, excuse me, forecast data that informs the goals and policies, the updates to land use designations, the future land use map, and then we also want to allow ample time for discussion and questions. So the requirements, so this chapter is required by the Growth Management Act. And as you can see, there are several required pieces, and it really is very broad and touches so many of the different industries and sectors that are in our community, including like the public, the public spaces that we have, open spaces, recreation parks, all the way to airports and aviation, agriculture. So it just is very broad and touches a lot of, a lot of things. I wanted to also just touch on a couple of definitions for you because, you know, when we talk about population density, that when we're talking about have land use and density, we're talking about how many dwelling units per acre. And so that can really change in some of our zoning areas. So we're thinking about how many households per acre. And then when we talk about intensity, we're referring to like the lot coverage. So then it's talking about how many of the square feet on a lot have a building or a development on them and how many are open. So, um, and sorry, lot intensity also refers to building height in some cases as well. So those kind of things are going into that. And so that has to be included in this chapter per the, for the regulations at state, at Growth Management Act Regulations. Environmental justice was added with House Bill 1181, and it requires us to consider those health impacts that may be, you know, next door to people if we don't make great plans about how to separate humans from land uses that might have impacts. So those are the pieces there. We have also making sure we all have enough water and the water is clean for our public water supply and that that is adequate for the growth that we expect. So promoting active lifestyles and reducing the amount of emissions that we create because of how we plan and how far apart things are planned. And then safeguarding waters that discharge into waters of the state. And again, definition alert, waters of the state refer is in RCW 904820, and it refers to all the, all the water in the state. So that waters of the state is a little different than shorelines of the state, and those are kind of two different things. We're talking about the waters right now. So, and it includes Puget Sound and just making sure that all of our water is clean and healthy for all the uses, including fisheries and including recreation and including, you know, surface waters and things like that. So. All right, gonna take a minute and make sure I'm going nice and, nice and slow and, and calm because I know it's a lot to take in. Oh, I see your hand, Councilmember Kathy.
Oh, thank you. Yes. If on the, I believe it was the first slide, could you just define for me in that requirement, what's community forests within the urban growth area is, what's an urban forest or what's the definition of that by the state?
I am not, I don't have the state definition handy. I'm, I'm sorry about that. But community forests, I think they can be identified and described a little differently depending on the jurisdiction. I know that we have identified community forests through the National, the National Forest Program. And they have community forests that are used for all kinds of purposes and they allow recreation and and I think Brad has a definition handy. Brad, if I could let you take it away.
Yeah. Councilmember Kathy, the, the definition of urban forest for Tom Waters actually from our Urban Forestry Management Plan, and it's a very broad definition. So it includes all kinds of manage, well, it could be a managed forest from the perspective of being used for timber sale or something like that, but it's typically set aside parkland, or it could be set aside private land that could be used for that. So it's a very broad one. I think it gives us a lot of flexibility and in supporting different things with it.
Does it, is it same synonymous with when we say open space? Or are we talking about two different things?
Uh, open space is probably the larger category. So you, open space, for example, can include conservation land for the gopher, for native prairie, or open space could be parkland actively used for recreation, or it could be something like a wetland or a steep slope that has a forest on it that's set aside for that as well. So it's a little bit broader term, but urban forest would fall under the category of an open space.
Okay, thank you. I, I, I don't remember hearing that word, so I'm checking to make sure.
Thank you. Of course. Thanks, Brad. So we, in terms of the waters of state, we're really reviewing that drainage and flooding and stormwater to make sure that that's not polluting our waters. And so next slide, we're looking at, or we're required to also consider the role that wildfire plays in our ecosystem and then in our communities and adopt either international building code standards or develop our own standards to provide separation between wildlands and human development and then also using wildfire adoption measures. So a lot of this is verbatim from the WAC. Just so you know, I, I can give you a minute to read it, but well, I will just give you just a minute to read it so you know what it's there. And we also have it within the chapter as well. Alrighty. So going on to a little bit more of the data. So as we were looking at what land use is going to require in the future, we really wanted to make sure we started with some, some numbers to work with and that we were using metrics. These metrics come from Commerce and then jurisdictions work with the Thurston Regional Planning Council. And the jurisdictions agree to like, we have a negotiation type of setting where we agree to the allotment for each community. And that these numbers are not solely dependent on population projections, but that's largely where this data comes from. And this, I believe, is available in the allotment, land allotment. Oh gosh, it's a TRPC document and the title is not coming to me at the moment, but I will. Oh, darn. Anyway, the, um, there's an allotment study that TRPC did and, and this is a summary of that. So as you see.
I do have a question on the jobs. Is that the correct years, 2017 to 2025?
Yes, not all of the numbers were updated in 2024. And so 2017 was the last time the numbers, the, the jobs were updated.
Okay, not a problem.
Yeah.
Brad, do you have more information on that?
Yeah, so a couple of things. There was a specific housing allotment process that all the jurisdictions in Thurston County went through with TRPC to arrive at the housing units for each of the jurisdictions, and that's where the 9,192 comes from. That's for RUGA and the city together. The population projection is from TRPC. You'll notice that it's slightly less than what we had started with. We had backed out some figures that we weren't aware of as part of the housing allocation. We were also, just as a clarification, a portion of that housing allocation is actually for people who currently live in the city of Tom Water who can't afford to be in a different unit. So they may be doubling up and so forth. So that's why the population dropped. And we're using the TRPC numbers for that. And then Dana's correct, the, the employment forecast hasn't been updated by TRPC since 2017. So we're, we, we have to use that as our estimate. Obviously, you know, it's almost eight, nine years old and it's pre-COVID. But I still think it's probably within the realm of possibility for growth to be as, as tied to population.
Thanks for providing that background for the population projection, Brad. Any other questions? Okay, moving on. When we are talking about, or when we get those numbers and then we're thinking about what that looks like on the land, there are really two things that drive how we do that, how we allocate land use or land, yeah, like land use designations. And one is the need. So population, housing and jobs really constitute that need. And then the land capacity is the other side of that where it kind of dictates what we have. So, or the supply. So the need is a kind of tantamount to demand and then capacity is supply. And then in order to make sure that we have communities that are somewhat balanced and then also reflect their historic, their historic development. We have subdivided our city into 11 neighborhoods, and that's based on the historic uses of physical features and community vision. So we, when we think about capacity, we're really thinking about kind of what prevents us from just putting anything anywhere we want to. And so when we think about those things, we're thinking about the physical and environmental features, the historic use, what's already there, the current use, and then community priorities and community concerns. Those things are really part of what goes into our thought process on that. And then I wanted to let you know that we have neighborhood, neighborhood profiles that really dig into the neighborhoods and what constraints are there and what the physical features are there. And it talks about the population and the kind of projections for the future and what challenges we may have in every neighborhood. So that's within the technical information on, in Part Two. All right. In terms of needs, I just wanted to dig into this a little bit more. So we talked about this being the population, the housing and the and the jobs. And so when we think about those three categories and we had Thurston Regional Planning Council analyze our current land use and then with the projections in mind, they said, how much land will we have available for housing? And the land use didn't, oh, let me just double check here in my brain. At the time, it didn't account for HCP numbers. So this is not accounting for lands that we will need to set aside for HCP. But given that analysis, there are only 35 units in surplus for anyone in 80% AMI and under. So anyone in a low income, very low income category in those, I think there are three categories that kind of lump into that. So 80 to zero, they all only have a surplus of 35 units. So it's not a great margin. And then again, it didn't accommodate for any of the lands that we're gonna need for habitat mitigation. So that is, that was a bit of a red flag in terms of our need not being sufficient for housing. And then, oh, Brad, thank you, Brad.
Yeah, I, I apologize. A quick clarification on the Habitat for Conservation, Habitat Conservation Plan. That was a factor in the land use allocation.
No, sorry.
In the original buildable lands, which was the basis for the land allocation process, there was a factor taken out for HCPs, but it really wasn't sufficient for what we expected. So we had a special amount of acreage that was taken out, about 300 acres of our developable residential land. So we've accounted for probably 25% of potential conservation land within the city as part of that process. But Dana is very correct on the important point is there's a very narrow margin about with the amount of space that we anticipate we're gonna need to accommodate middle and multifamily housing for those people who are in the 80% and under AMI. And that's why we're proposing various changes that Dana will be talking about here in a moment.
All right, Councilmember Swordhout.
So I hope I'm not jumping ahead, but I was wondering, as long as we're having this conversation about the habitat land, when I was looking at Part Two where they had the maps and everything, is it even possible to do like an overlay? Because it shows like we're single family and multifamily on the different areas where the, that could have that type of housing. But is there a possibility of putting an overlay to show where the, where the habitat would have to be? I mean, where are we constricted as far as at this point currently from building? I, I just visually, is that even possible to see that? So at this point?
Yeah, there, there's two parts to that. Thank you for your question. Number one, it's really not possible to see that because it depends upon our ability to buy conservation land within the city. And to be honest, we don't know where that is at the moment. There's some possibilities on the table, but it could be almost anywhere. The other issue is sort of the overlay of where we would need to look for, we could look for conservation land within the city is the southern two thirds of the city. So we can't really fine tune it much more than that.
Councilmember Swordhout, or Daha, sorry.
Thank you. Now here, we look alike. Eileen looks great, so I'll take it. Now I have a question based on that with the, the overlay in the area. I thought in the last update we had on the Habitat Conservation Plan that Administrator Parks talked about the agency telling us there were three areas to look at to get habitat land. Is that still valid? Is that still current or have they changed that request?
They have changed that based on further conversations. And over the past year, in fact, the, the regional manager has said that again, that's guidance and it is guidance, not required. If we can support that potentially, that would be good, but not, we're not basing any of our purchases or anything like that on that.
That's a good update. Thank you, Brad. The one question I had was in a meeting earlier today and that came up with 8% area median income, and they were referencing a single person earning $63,000. Is, is that our definition at Tom Water? Around that, around that much? Is a single person?
We use the HUD definition that is actually that the Housing Authority has, and the Housing Authority has a really good breakdown on their website for one through, I think, one through six family members and the different incomes based on that and how they fall within the range. So.
Perfect. Thank you, Brad. I mean, Dana and Brad, as we move forward with these type of presentations, when we're using like whatever percentage AMI, if we can put a parentheses and like a value to that, because I know that I get questions a lot like, what does that mean? And so thank you for that definition, but somewhere where we can easily identify that or just give us some ballpark number, that would be helpful.
Yeah, and I think that's, that's a good thing. Now, the one thing obviously to keep in mind is it changes every year. And so what, for our purposes of illustrating what it is now, we could, we could talk about it. And maybe, you know, talk about what the range has been over the past few years because it has increased, obviously. But yeah.
That would help. Thank you.
Thank you. I've made a note of it and, and can include that. Thank you so much. So besides the fact that, you know, we can see this red flag in housing where we are not, we have a potential for not meeting a need or being very close to or having just, just barely enough surplus. Then when we moved into and we're looking at commercial and industrial lands, then the Buildable Lands Report from 2021 showed that those lands we had sufficient space for, and that is in keeping with the projected development or the projected economic development. So it, it's not to say that we'll have the perfect quotient of economic land and housing and everyone will have in a space for a job in our city. That's not how that calculation is made. The calculation is made based on the current trends and what we have now and what we expect to grow by. So I hope that kind of brings, brings a little bit more light. Sometimes, you know, it looks like we do have quite a bit of residential space. And that's what the trends have shown, that we will continue to have residential space. So there are some comments or there's some, probably some things we can do in the Economic Development Plan to, to influence that potentially, but that's not necessarily the, the discussion we can have here in the Land Use Chapter. And then when we think about reducing, so one of the requirements was to act promote active lifestyles and to reduce vehicle miles traveled. And so one of the needs that we have as a city is to plan our city so that we have closer proximity to those daily needs and to, and to jobs to our housing. So that is something that we need to kind of think about and plan for. Also thinking about the, the amount of space that we are gonna need for those industry or those commercial spaces and not overplanning commercial spaces. So we're taking up land for our housing. Does that make sense? I hope so. All right. So moving forward, when we think about the the other kind of push and pull of attention in this chapter really has to do with the constraints. And some of the things that limit us are the critical areas that we want to protect and, and make sure we're not we're, make sure we're protecting both our, both our ecosystem, but then also residents as we, you know, as we build on slopes that can be challenging and can be hazardous, or we also have the wildfire areas that are part of this as well, wildlife, wildlife habitat conservation areas. So all of those factors. Then we also want to consider some of the constraints are what is currently built on the ground or current uses are historic uses. So some of the things we want to preserve in terms of historic character and historic importance. And then market conditions and other drivers really can, can influence this, like I was mentioning with the economic development and our commercial areas. So we can't, we can't necessarily tell who to build what, where. We can say what is allowable, but that's, that's kind of within the realms of our allowances. All right. So getting into the, the details a little bit more of the update, we have these are the zone, excuse me, these are the land use designations that we're proposing to change, and I wanted to make it really clear what the current names and densities are, and then what the proposed names and densities are. And this is the answer to the, the issue, that red flag that we saw with the 35 units only of residential space available. Instead of taking further lands from some of the other uses and expanding our residential zones, we, we've decided that the most appropriate thing would be to increase our density. Therefore maximizing our maximizing the incentives or the, the investments that we already have in the ground in terms of our public, our public infrastructure, but then also being, being cautious with the, any nexus with our natural spaces and sensitive areas. So you'll notice there's no change to the rural residential resource, but residential, not rural, residential sensitive resource base. So this is a continuation where we can see these land use designations and their new proposed densities. All right. I wanna make sure we have enough time to explore some maps because I think it's pretty important. I need to pop out of the slide, oops, the presentation for a second in order to show you the first map. So this is the proposed land use designation map, future land use designation map. And it was included in the map packet. So this is something that would be great to guide your comments and explore a little further. I wanted to point specifically to the little table in the corner of this map. This one shows the identification code.
We don't have the map up there.
Oh, we don't. So let me, I might have to share again. There we go. Thank you so much for letting me know. And please let me know when it's up.
I, I see it now.
Oh, great. So this is the map and it is a beast. Please don't print it. It's like 36 by 48 inches. We'll have a copy in at City Hall if you'd like to see it in print. And this here is in the bottom left corner is a little legend that shows you how the, how the designations are changing. And I just want to point out that, you know, we have these two zones, single family low and single family medium that are changing into low density residential. So these two zones will become one zone. And it just simplifies a lot of our processes, especially land use applications and and it just reduces the amount of different types of zones that we have. And then I also want to note that we do have one, one parcel that was public institutional that is becoming mixed use. And those are the only changes. So as you see here, it's lands that are already designated for the multifamily medium going to medium density residential. And so really it's a name change. And then here, I wanted to point this out. This is the public institutional changing to multi or a mixed use, excuse me. And this, if you might notice, this is Henderson Boulevard here, and this is Yelm Highway. So this would be the Starbucks and public. And this is Yelm Highway. So this would be the Starbucks and public institution no longer um. Fits what the development that is happening in that area. So it makes sense to change it to uh mixed use. So I want to keep moving forward. Do we have any questions on the map? Okay, now we'll um. Go and grab this link. This link is active in your packet. So you can click on it and it will pull open our um overlay map experience. Hopefully. You had a chance to look at it in advance and if not, this is a great opportunity for me to show you how it works and uh take any questions. Ah, thank you.
Yes.
Every time I switch screens, share again, Dana, share again. Alrighty.
Yeah, we have that now.
Fantastic. So it's an interactive map. So again, a different type of map tool. So what we can see with this map is um, across the top, we have each of the different critical areas. And they load up behind the map. So you can um scroll through the legend. To see what this critical area, what these critical area pieces look like. So when you see the hundred year flood zone here, you can see that's in the lighter teal and then you see. Um, oh, we should have. We should have maybe a different. I think it's just showing hundred year, but I do have a couple of different colors of teal, so I might have to clarify that. Um, and maybe just, they're not just all showing up in this view. So I apologize. I will. I'll look into that and make sure we can update this tool, but it will be at the same link. Um, but then you got your FEMA flood zone and to see this, we may have to zoom in a little bit. So you see these blue waterways here are FEMA flood zones and then the really light blue is the floodway. So we can see that and then we can pull over the, the. I want to be careful. It's the draft. Uh, future land use designations and we can see what, what we're proposing that those future land use designations would look like. And you can um, provide some comments about. What that looks like and how we can accommodate our growth, um, given those things. So same thing for landslides. Hazards, critical area, wetlands, shorelines, um, and then we have one more that's hidden by my. And then we can actually see all of them together. So these really represent the environmental constraints. I think it was really uh, a good idea. Commissioner sort out to see the habitat conservation lands, but as Brad suggested, it's. Uh, a little more complicated and throwing it up on a map because of our own economic constraints. So hopefully this is a useful tool and you find it interesting and helpful as you review. The um, the future land use designations. I'm gonna switch back and I'm gonna share my screen this time. Um. Give me just a second. There we are. Hopefully you can see the PowerPoint back up.
Yes.
Oh, back to the beginning. It'll take me just a second to scroll through. My apologies as I flip fast. And then we're um, at discussion. If you have any questions? Or comments?
Any questions? Great. That's very comprehensive. Uh, Councilor, do you, do you have a question?
Well, just a comment, I um, on the land use element, just on when they uh have the language in there, they have like fifteen. Things that they, you talk about and under um. Six that calls out property rights and it's. I don't know if we've ever talked about that before. Um, it's very specific about private property should not be taken for public use without. Just compensation had been made. And I mean, it's kind of a, you know, it's a. We know that, but I just thought it was interesting that we're calling it out. Have we always done that before? Um. Because I think it's interesting, like when we deal things with um. Where we're doing our uh, uh, with our uh, code enforcement issues with land and stuff like that, that. Somehow people think that we have the right to take people's property, but we don't. And so I thought it was interesting that it's called out there. Um, and why, just, just was just curious why it was called out there, so.
You, uh, are you saying that it's called out within the technical definitions in like the requirements?
Um, it's under the comp plan land use. You had it under, let's see, there's, it lists the, the app, the element goals. And so we thought reducing. Um, it's urban growth, reduce sprawl, transportation. And then uh, economic development, then it talks about property rights and then permits. And so I was just surprised that it. Uh, I don't know, I'm just being a nerd, but I just saw the property rights part and, and um. Just thought it was interesting that we are going to tell people that we aren't going to take their, their property, which we wouldn't take their property, but yeah. So Brad, I don't know if you're gonna have something to say about that, so.
That's a, it's a good notice and actually brings up a good topic and, and I'm, this sort of fits in with the land use training the council had earlier this summer. Uh, it is one of the fifteen goals of the GMA uh, to recognize and protect private property. And it's not necessarily something we plan for as terms of long-term development, but it's something that legally we cover. Every time we issue a permit or we deal with any kind of. Potential extraction, whether it's land or, or fees or whatever, um. That is sort of a fundamental thing that doesn't always get mentioned. Uh, and I think it's just something, I think it's important to include that sort of, you know, we're recognizing that this is something we operate under every day. Uh, but it's not necessarily something we've always talked about, maybe upfront in the, in the comp kind of comprehensive planning process.
Okay. And I think it's something too that it's. On our process and also again, like when we do code enforcement, things like that, that people don't understand. You know, where the city, where we are on, on those kinds of things that we are not all powerful. So as far as those kinds of where the rights are. So thank you for pulling that out.
Right. Uh, Councilor, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. The one question, just overall comment is. In the past conversations, we've talked about word choice, right? And connotation, positive, negative. When we want to be to neutral, the one thought that came to my head is the slide that said constraints. Right? And if we're using the word constraint as a limitation for our environmental landscape. That had a negative connotation for me and I'm wondering if we could think about the word choice for that, if it's just uh, factors. Right? Parameters instead of constraint, like it's, our environment isn't. The wetland is not a bad thing. It's not a, an issue we have to deal with, right? Like it is an issue, but it's not a bad thing. So I'm just wondering, see Brad coming on video, just like the connotation with that.
Yeah, no, I, I appreciate the thought there and it's not a, a value recognition in terms of, you know. Protecting or setting aside critical areas is, is not a bad thing. It is something that when we're talking about land capacity and availability for developable land. Uh, either housing or anything else, it is a constraint on the supply. Uh, and I think it's okay to talk about that way without having it as a negative connotation. Uh, it's something that has been laid out in the state guidance about how to approach this. So, um. I, I think it's okay to talk about it this way, but also to acknowledge obviously the value and the reason why we're setting aside all those areas in the first place.
Perfect. I just don't want to lose that nuance of, it's. So thank you for putting that, the word into context for how it's being used tonight. I appreciate it.
I think the intention to us to recognize that those lands are off the table, so as to speak.
Alright, any other questions or comments? Uh, Councilor, sort out.
So Brad, if we have, uh, I've got some other little comments that I made, so we should just shoot an email to you with um, any other comments that we have from our reading then?
Yes, please. And then as, as a reminder to all the council members, um, every element is now available in your packet. Um, for review and comment. So as you, if you have anything that you want to mark up or just add comments or anything. Uh, you can use either the PDF or the Word document to do that. And then send, then send me anything that you've got and I'll make sure that our team has a chance to review and we have questions, we'll reach out.
Great, thank you. And, and so just for everyone who's watching, this is a review and. Uh, this is, more of this will be coming to us again in the future as we. Define and refine uh, our, our information. So. It's work in progress.
Very much. Um, please use the comp plan email or our um staff emails. I'll also work this, just gets to. The whole team and love to hear what you have to think about these and, and how we can improve it. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, so next is the twenty twenty five comprehensive plan periodic update. The housing stakeholder process. And I see Erica, uh, Erica Smith Erickson, you're going to be presenting.
Yeah, it's been a while. Um, it's nice to see you all this evening. Erica Smith Erickson, I am the Housing and Land Use Planner. Uh, for the city of Tom Water and tonight, we are going to discuss the housing element. Unfortunately, I don't have a lot of data and tables for you this evening. I know we've been, over the last two years discussing a lot of numbers. I think that having the discussion with the land use element prior to this is really going to help complement. Uh, what we're going to discuss with the housing element, uh, as far as zoning, land use designations, increasing densities. Because that really ties in to the work that we've been doing on the housing element. Uh, how do we incorporate middle housing? Into our updated development code and how do we allow for these middle housing types? With the land use element and the zoning updates. I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen really quick. Before I get started.
Alright, we have it.
Perfect. So, um, tonight, uh, we'd like, I'd like to revisit some of the state requirements for the housing element update. Uh, but more specifically how we address those specific items. And discuss our public outreach and what we heard from the community and how we incorporated that feedback into the housing elements and the priorities of the community. So for the Growth Management Act, the goal for housing is plan for and accommodate housing affordable to all economic segments of the population of the state. Promote a variety of residential densities and housing types, encourage the preservation of existing housing stock. It's unique. What we have underlined here is new to this update, so we need to plan for all economic segments. That's when we're talking about. AMI, uh, those percentages, low income, uh, moderate income, very low income. Um, the housing element plays a role in working with the land use element. To allocate sufficient land to ensure an adequate supply of buildable land for the housing. Um, for housing serving each economic class. Again, wonderful how that land use element. Discussion tied into this housing element discussion that we're having now. Uh, each residential land use designation, including the land use or the mixed use designation will provide a variety of housing types. And at uh varying densities. Um, I do have that background information really quick about the AMI, the percentages and those numbers. Um, thirty percent AMI, which is extremely low income for a family. I'm going to give you the numbers for a family of three because the average household size is just over two. So we're gonna round up to three, thirty percent, uh, so that's extremely low income would be thirty one thousand five hundred. Fifty percent of the median income, which is very low income is fifty two thousand five hundred and fifty. And then eighty percent of the median would be uh considered low income and that's at eighty four thousand and fifty dollars. Um, according to Housing and Urban Development HUD, in twenty twenty five, a moderate income at a hundred percent of. Uh, the area median income for a Thurston County household would be a hundred and two thousand. Five hundred dollars annually. Uh, this graphic here shows uh how the Growth Management Act helps shape and guide housing in Washington State. We have Growth Management Act, uh, then we go down to the county. Wide planning policies, which is updated by the county. And then we have the comprehensive plan, our housing element. And our development regulations uh with the city of Tom Water with your staff. And then that helps guide the housing that is provided. In addition to the housing goal. The city's housing element will need to address the following State Growth Management Act requirements. From our RCW thirty six seventy A seventy and it was subs- substantially amended in twenty twenty three. The city needs to identify the number of housing units necessary for growth based on data provided by the Department of Commerce. The units need to be analyzed and broken down further into income gather, income categories. As well as account for their permanent supportive housing and our emergency housing and emergency shelters. A total of nine thousand one hundred and ninety two units are needed with a population increase of seventeen thousand. Roughly over the next twenty years, it's actually more to bring us to a total of forty six thousand and seventy. And then the element must include goals, policies and actions addressing the preservation. Improvement and development of housing. This includes allowing middle housing types such as duplexes, triplexes and townhomes. We updated our goals and policies in the draft implementation items in part one of the housing element. As well as we are currently working on updating the Tom Water Municipal Code to allow for. Middle housing and our residential zonings. Furthermore, we need to plan for and allow housing such as our permanent supportive housing and emergency housing in our shelters. Manufactured housing, um, care facilities, extremely low, low income housing and ensure there is sufficient land for each housing type. And income, again, going back to our land use element, going. Uh, talking about our land capacity analysis, our housing allocation, working with the county, working with Thurston Regional. Um, Planning Council to really identify. How many units are needed within the city of Tom Water uh, in the urban growth area and at what income bracket? And um, based on the housing allocation process that was done in collaboration with the other jurisdictions and TRPC, the city of Tom Water needs. Seven hundred and twenty four permanent supportive or emergency. Uh, shelters and housing units within the city and urban growth area combined. Um, staff updated the goals, policies and draft implementation items, reviewed our design guidelines. Tom Water's Housing Action Plan, the Tom Water Municipal Code. Um, to end the Tom Water Municipal Code to address most of these items. The housing element also is related to the work that is done in the land use element, transportation plan and the economic development plan. Um, I wanted to talk about uh bullet number two that was done. Uh, in a multi-jurisdictional collaboration with consultants on Common Bridges and BHC. Um, through the displacement analysis, uh, which we will discuss further on slide two. Or this next slide, not side two. Sorry about that. Alright, so another state requirement for this update is we need to um, address racially disparate impacts and displacement. We need to identify local policies and regulations that result in racially disparate impacts, displacement and the inclusion of housing. Uh, this includes zoning that may have a discriminatory, discriminatory effect, disinvestment. And infrastructure availability, development codes and restrictions. And even wording such as maintaining character within our current code that can have a racially disparate impact. Or could cause displacement. Um, and then identify and implement policies and regulations to address and begin to undo racially disparate impacts. Displacement and exclusion in housing caused by local policies, plans and actions. Uh, working with the consultants, we reviewed our current housing element, our housing action plans. The goals and policies of the current plan and, and they were able to provide us with an analysis and kind of a scoring card. And provided uh suggested changes and updated language uh that we. In, in turn included into this new updated draft of the housing element. And then we needed to identify areas that may be at higher risk of displacement from market forces that occur with changes to zoning. Development regulations and capital investments. Um, as well as establish anti-displacement policies with consideration given to the preservation of historical and cultural communities. The consultants analyzed data, trends and literature. They met with stakeholder groups. Um, there was a low income group, there was a manufactured home group, there was an accessory dwelling unit group. And they even had a military and family uh stakeholder group. and they even had a military and family uh stakeholder group to kind of talk about racially disparate impacts and displacement. Um again, this was a regional collaborative effort, so it wasn't specific just to the city of Tom Water. But what the consultants did is they reviewed literature, looked at our data and then took and incorporated what they heard also with the stakeholders regionally uh to provide us some context for um this requirement and uh what we could do. For Tom Water, uh the main concerns, uh the highest risk of displacement uh was our manufactured home parks and our seniors. Which shouldn't be a surprise. I know we've had discussions um about our manufactured home park. Fortunately, Tom Water does have that overlay zoning that does protect the manufactured home parks. But we don't necessarily have a mechanism to stop the manufactured home parks from being sold. We do have a notification process. But again, it's how do we get the funds? How do we create a process for community members? I see a hand raised, Councilmember Doff.
Thank you, Erica. The one question I had with that is the emails that we are getting from a resident in a manufactured home park regarding that process. I know there's a two-year notification, but the concerns that were voiced is regarding the, you weren't offered market rate, the market value for your home. It was a fraction of that. Now is that where is that requirement coming from and why are we, why have we adopted that?
I'm gonna let Brad help me with that. Is, are you talking about the commerce noticing when it goes for sale?
It's the emails that um from the resident in Eagles Landing, right? The uses that it could be, but the value of their home being purchased is not market rate value.
Yeah, that's not something I was aware of and it's not something necessarily that we have been actively looking at regulations for. That would be something I would have to take a closer look at to see what we could or couldn't do on the local level to address that. Um I know there was a separate email that you had provided about potential concerns for middle housing units being located in our existing manufactured home park zones. Uh I think Erica's probably addressed that already by saying we've excluded that from those zones from those level of changes, so. For that very reason, we wanted to protect the manufactured homes that are in there from another use coming in, so.
I would, thank you. I would love, we uh, I was in a meeting last night with some residents and the escalation and the concern, the increased cortisol levels is they were saying, well, because of the ten lists, like ABC, whatever, of what could go there. They were saying you could do pickleball courts, you could do the community center, you could put a pool there, right? And so I was like, I hear you. And like our current intent and what we're doing and what we're seeing and why it was created, but there is concern, the, yes, Erica, I see your finger.
I'm so excited, yeah. Yeah, so with our land use, working with the land use element and then updating our zoning. Um uh we realized quickly, like, that would be a mess to allow middle housing in our protected manufactured home park zoning. Um and so there is an alternative to allowing middle housing and two units per lot, um which is required by the state in all residential zoning. If you can prove or justify that your other residential zonings um at least seventy-five percent of those can accommodate and you can you allow for those middle housing types. So the RSR, the the sensitive resource areas, that zoning, no changes are being done to the densities and the allowed uses in that zoning designation as well as the manufactured home parks. So we're not gonna allow um duplexes, triplexes, middle housing. Those are essentially staying the same with no proposed amendments because uh by updating our densities and our allowed uses and the other residential uh zoning designations, we still meet that threshold that state um requirement for meeting seventy-five percent, so.
Thank you.
And I apologize. And very quickly, I, uh we can provide the list of permitted and and conditional uses that are currently allowed in our manufactured home park zone. One of the things that we keep in mind is is the way we had structured the original ordinance. Uh and the reason it was still defensible uh was that it included some other uses. And the reason if we exclude everything except for manufactured home parks, then I think we have a case against us. Um and that's the reason why we allowed as conditional uses churches or cemeteries or schools. And that's really kind of the extent of the things that, the big things that we allow. Everything else, I think, is very much, I doubt somebody's gonna buy a manufactured home park and put in an adult family home.
Right, the concern is, yes, I understand, I get that. The residents are scared that they're gonna get kicked out and they won't have the funds to move their home, right? So right, so they're hearing, we could lose our home. One of the owners of the Eagles Landing is older and so the residents are currently, if this person passes and the family takes over, will they get told that they're, they're gonna lose their homes?
Right.
That's the the root issue for the residents at Eagles Landing. There's also concerns that residents at Western Plaza, because those homes are a lot older and cannot be moved.
Right. But I don't think that's necessarily a zoning issue in terms of, say, the change of use out there. It is definitely an affordability and another issue, which um I think that's the one we have struggled with on our ability to, how do we address those things? And so I think that's, that's a different discussion. I know Olympia has other, they'll, they have a much broader range of things that could potentially occur within a manufactured home park.
If there's an opportunity as one of our goals and strategies to allot staff time to look at that and figure out what updates could be possible, I, I would love that.
Yeah. Okay.
That's it, just not to lose that of if, if things are coming across as loopholes to residents, how do we, how do we what tools or resources and communication and education can we do? Thank you.
I, I might just add really quickly to that because I sit on AWC Legislative uh com- uh Committee. And one of the things that I made sure was on the agenda and especially for this last legislative session is dealing with manufactured homes. So that is on the AWC manufactured home agenda. And we continue to try to press that through the legislature to get as many protections and try to get some of those, uh some of those issues changed because a lot of communities have looked at what we've done initially, which is not the same protections in a lot of other cities. So I think we've been kind of the model and then um look, moving that forward, including funding uh sources for residents to purchase manufactured home parks to encourage um resident-owned manufactured home parks. So you know, it's starting to be discussed more at the li- uh at the state level and through aid Association Washington Cities, because they see that as a critical area and there are several cities that have a large manufactured home population and they don't want to lose that either, so.
I love that, Mayor. It's also, how do we also communicate that to the residents, the twelve hundred manufactured homes? So nice work, Mayor. I appreciate that. That's a great update.
And I do believe in our goals, policies and actions. We have identified that because we have met with those stakeholders. We have heard those voices of those community members. Um I will just triple check at the end because right now we are in the final stages of doing the housing element, the goals, policies, draft implementation actions. They are draft, um but these are really helping this framework, this element update, the goals, policies and actions are gonna help determine our work plans moving forward. What do we do when we're finally done updating this comprehensive plan? That's when the real work gets done. So um thank you for that feedback. I will make sure because we are tracking comments. We're gonna kind of discuss at the end of the, the presentation, but um yeah, good to know and we are well aware. We had consultants verify that and they have suggested language with a go, a policy action item that we did incorporate as well. Um so it's, it should be in our goals and policies. And then also uh when we talk about racially disparate impacts uh and um displacement within the element. So it should be there. It's just, you know how big the element is. And then uh so yeah, as far as establishing anti-displacement policies with consideration given to the preservation of historical and cultural communities uh as well as uh investments in low, extremely low, moderate income housing, equitable development initiatives, inclusionary zoning, community planning requirements, tenant protections, land disposition policies and consideration of land that may be used for affordable housing. Alright, and then for our community engagement, we broke down the growth management.
I think Councilmember Kathy has a question.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Erica. Um I, I just read uh an article and I talked to a friend in California and they were talking about, I don't know if they were actually designating areas, but they were talking about not tiny homes, but smaller homes. Uh that they, they're looking at the, getting people housed. That they can't afford some of the homes that are on the market because they're too big or too costly. And they're not people who would qualify for living in a tiny home. But what, what do we have of, of any discussion about um building smaller homes on certain amount of land or? Do we have any, not restrictions, but? Yeah.
Well, um there's a few things coming to mind. So we have alternative uh housing, so like tiny homes on wheels. Uh those could be park models, tho- those could be, they're not technically considered uh recreation vehicles, but they are um tiny homes that uh you would have to get certified through LNI. Um we do have recreation vehicles and then um there are um accessory dwelling units, um smaller dwelling units. Uh I think like the, the minimum right now is around four hundred square feet, uh dependent on building code requirements. Um but then there's also something that I am personally passionate about is getting um housing of different sizes within communities and developments, so we don't just have you know, three, four bedroom homes, single family homes, but having a mixture of uh different types of housing. Like when we went on that housing tour and I got to show you guys, uh sorry, you all, a development that had single family homes, like twelve hundred square feet, there was duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes. So how do we incentivize, we can't necessarily at this time, we are not proposing to require, but how do we incentivize? How do we have these conversations? What would make that more appealing to developers in this area to maybe want to do these different kind of developments? So there, yeah, uh there, I see Brad has his hand up, so I'll let him, I'll let him.
I want to be clear that, that Eric and I had worked out a secret agreement that she would give me a certain sign that she wanted me to appear and if I didn't get the sign, I couldn't appear, so I'm breaking that rule. Uh I think Erica covered pretty much everything. What we do currently have on as in terms of incentives is uh when it comes to impact fees and connection charges, not only do we have reductions for ADUs and for permanently affordable housing, but we also have a reduction for uh single family houses below a certain threshold in Eric. I think it was like twelve hundred square feet or something. But there are other things like that that we could try to, in addition to allowing for all the middle housing types everywhere and all those other things, uh other things that we could look at uh to try to get at what, I think you have a very good point that you know, not everybody wants to live in multifamily or a giant home. There's the whole slew of other things that are, that are viable options that we should be encouraging.
Now, they uh, that's exactly what Eric is saying and what you're saying, Brad, and a, a, a kind of, a development kind of like that sprung up on some property that someone had a big, large house and they decided to do whatever with it and started a conversation. And this has created a different kind of community in this section of the city because people are living at different levels and in different kinds of houses and, and um all of that kind of thing. And so I just wondered, you know, because when, you know, people can't afford a big house or if people, um some people built in that area with rentals uh reasonable and it, anyway, I just was thinking of uh some way for people to transist into homes, uh you know, where they have yards and live in a little bit of a a block or a community or something.
Yeah, and.
No, I'm just glad that you uh agree, Erica. That, that gives me great.
I also forgot to mention, we have updated our code to make a cottage housing uh allowed and more um of our zoning designations. It's considered a middle housing type. So when we're allowing middle housing, we have decided to include cottage housing and per state requirements. It can't be more restrictive than our single family uh residential developments. So the design guidelines have been changed, uh updated. Hopefully the permitting process is easier. Furthermore, another exciting thing coming up with these, uh with the development code update is unit lot subdivision. So if there is an accessory dwelling unit on a parcel, technically that can be sold as an independent uh residence. And so someone has the opportunity to own a smaller residence. It would be um so there is that process coming with the twenty twenty-five development code update, which I'm still working on. But it is a requirement and it is coming. So there are a few options. There's some exciting things happening for the city of Tom Water as far as housing.
Wonderful. Now that's, that's good because that uh, that gives people hope that they might get into a house or, you know.
Yeah, I think it's great, especially for families who have other family members that are living in accessory dwelling units on their property and they want a opportunity to potentially own and uh have that, the equity put into that, so. Yeah, not a problem. Uh so going back to the presentation, um thank you for the wonderful discussion. I'm super excited if you can't tell. Um but uh just wanted to kind of go over some of the community engagement that we had and some of the major themes that we had over the last two years. Um I wanted to, we broke down all the state requirements, middle housing, background, data, numbers, housing allocation, um AMI, all that uh into about six, six general topics. So introduction, background, that's when we first started reaching out, letting people know what was going on, uh we're updating the housing element, giving them some background information, talking about some new legislative requirements. Um and then we, we met with, we researched, met with um uh stakeholders and we really wanted to gather feedback and ask questions, get to know um some perspectives, people's experiences uh and the needs uh in the community regarding housing. And then we started to really uh look at the data and start to do a gap analysis, use Commerce Checklist and start going through the requirements, what we needed to incorporate into the plan as well as incorporating feedback that we received. Um and then we did public engagement with equity and displacement with the stake, uh with our consultants uh through uh the displacement analysis report. And then uh we started presenting our draft goals, policies and implementation actions. We got a lot of great feedback. I do have some slides going uh over what we've heard through this process on the goals, policies and action items. And then uh, you know, implementation, post-house, we're, we've posted the draft housing element for public review and comment. Um and then we are working on the draft development code and design review updates. I have a internal stakeholder group helping me with that, with our current planning, our engineering department and helping me with these updates. How, how are we gonna do a unit lot subdivision? What does that look like? What, what are the, what are the uh, the site lot requirements if we update the zoning, impervious surface? Some technical information um from our experts in our current planning department and people who review uh project proposals. And this is a, a nice little summary of some of the, the bigger community engagement events uh staff attended. Um I also, you know, staff also met with groups and individuals one-on-one whenever the need would arise. We, I really a priority for this update uh was to meet people where they were, where they are and to be available. Uh something I've really tried to share with the community is like, please come to us, come to me with any questions, concerns, anything housing related. I wanted to make sure we're getting as much input as possible, um even outside of these uh timeframes or these uh specific uh events, just to be more accessible. Alright, we're gonna dive into some of the stakeholder feedback, uh what we heard from our core work group. Uh this really is kind of a summary of what we heard. uh, this really is kind of a summary of what we heard at our November sixth meeting. It was our second meeting with, uh, the stakeholders, um, to go over the goals, policies and, uh, draft action items. Uh, our core stakeholder group included the school district, uh, realtors, housing developers, housing providers, community members, um, social workers. So it was a great group of people and I really enjoyed getting to have all of us come together and talk, uh, from our perspectives on housing and experiences and what we're seeing in the needs of the community within the city of Tom Water. Um, so some highlighted topics here, there are two pages. Uh, plan for and require more density at the time of build, such as the potential for accessory dwelling units. I like this idea. It would be so cool to see a developer come in and actually plan for, have accessory dwelling units, um, at the time of development through the subdivision process. I think that would be really cool to see. Uh, waive impact fees for certain affordability percentages such as a median income. Ensure displacement analysis does not result in unnecessary barriers to housing productions. Expand the city's multifamily tax exemption program to add options for renewing the twelve year exemption and incorporating or adding the twenty-year option. Increase tenant protections and have increased liabilities and maintenance repair costs for developers and landlords. Prioritize septic well conversions for more housing capacity and density. Identify the specific unique needs for housing in Tom Water, such as our families and seniors. Identify areas. So with that one, I, I like to think of it as life cycle housing. I don't know if we recall life cycle housing, but it's housing for all stages of life, uh, post-high school graduation, college. If you're in your early adult career, oops. Um, you know, when you're starting a family, when you're expanding your family and then, you know, maybe you want to downsize once your children move out. So that's life cycle housing. Uh, identify areas of high priority for affordable housing and have long-range planning involved with the permitting process. Reduce roadblocks and permit timelines. Identify areas of high pri- priority for affordable housing and have long-range planning involved with the, oops, sorry. That's, that is, uh, the last one I just read. Have the city start a local housing stakeholder group or committee that meets at scheduled intervals to continue collaboration. This one really excites me as well, just because we did have such a good experience having our core stakeholder group meet and discuss housing-related, um, priorities and needs within the community. It's, and it's a way to network and collaborate. Uh, you know, eventually maybe we could get, uh, financial institutions involved, but just having the school there, having developers there, having the real estate, uh, community there, the agents and, um, our housing providers, like, uh, affordable housing. It was, it was really, it was really cool to see everyone talk and discuss different perspectives. And they want to continue these conversations even after the comprehensive plan. So I thought that was really neat. Uh, the city should try to waive development regulations for innovative housing projects and demonstration projects. Another thing that I'm super excited about, we did implement this into our goals pa- policies and draft implementation action items. Um, uh, some communities are doing demonstration projects where they are waiving some, um, development standards, as long as they meet certain criteria and they're in certain areas. So, um, probably as where infrastructure is available and uh, transportation, uh, is there, but, uh, this is something to discuss further, but it is an exciting concept. Uh, Tom Monitor should try to buy land to sell to nonprofits and affording housing developers and Tom Water should start its own home fund. And Tom Water should create revolving funds for down payments and programs to help rescue renter rentals or renters with high risk backgrounds and have counseling and education for people available prior to being displaced. So again, this is what we heard from our core stakeholder work group. Um, I know it's a lot to digest, but, um, I did include our draft goals, policies and implementation action items. And you should be able to see where I tracked and documented where I incorporated this feedback into the goals, policies and actions. I know the climate element, they had a little bit of a different structure for tracking public comment. Um, but I did put that in the packet, so it was just my way of tracking and making sure I was putting feedback and incorporating that to the GPAs. I like to call that the GPA's goals, policies and actions.
Councilmember Ben Pauls.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I love all of this, Erica, and it's so good to see you. It seems like it's been forever since I've seen you.
Yeah.
Um, where it's recommended that the city should try to waive development regulations for innovative housing projects and demonstration projects. Um, I'm aware of a permitting issue right now where, um, there's a Connex box on a property that's trying to, um, allow for more housing. And so I really like that idea of seeing outside of the bureaucratic boxes that sometimes we have to, um, be within. So I really, I really like that because I think a lot of times when, um, these regulations are sometimes if we could see a little bit more gray than just black and white, it would help us get to our goal and really help our community out. So I'm really appreciative of, um, that recommendation from the work group.
And I will say it is a fine balance between, as, as we're all aware, um, the different regulations, the different plans, the different, uh, state requirements. And also we have to remember there's building code. So for a lot of things, that's where we kind of have some, trying to stay positive here. Um, less flexibility is because we have development, I mean, sorry, building code, uh, fire safety, uh, standards and things. And it is overall to protect, to help protect, um, the community, to help protect lives. So I understand and I love a creative, I love watching HGTV and seeing all the, the innovative ways that they're, uh, they have creative housing. But, um, yeah, so that is something to keep in mind. We, we still have to make sure that we follow other requirements. Um, Councilmember Dolph?
The, the example that Kelly's talking about, I think I know what she's talking about. It's not for housing, it's storage, right? So that's the, as we move through this process, there's another example of a resident trying to do a greenhouse attached to their shed, right? And then we, the requirements that the city has placed of the design and the engineering and the thousands of dollars to do a greenhouse that you can get for a hundred and fifty dollars at Costco. So those are the kind of examples, like, how do we fit those elements in when it's like a greenhouse, storage with housing? Um, so yes, and yes, and yes, and I get it all. And how do we, how do we juggle those innovative ideas and logic when sometimes with our regs are not as logical, when it's like a greenhouse or a shed? Like why is the same requirements for a greenhouse and a shed? Just something to put out there. Thank you, Erica, for all the work that you do. It's amazing.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, uh, I understand. And Brad, if you want to say anything, I did see you pop up. Um, please feel free. I just, I think, I still think it's a building code requirement. Uh, we, I will say with the development code update, we are allowing non-conforming, legally established, non-conforming structures to be converted to accessory dwelling units. Um, but again, it has, I do believe it has to meet building code requirements, which is energy code, fire safety, um, and those kind of things that go into, uh, uh, oh, habitable space.
Right. So if it's not habitable, no one's living in a greenhouse and no one's living in the Connex that's used for storage, how is that applicable? Right?
Well, there, there's a couple of parts to that, and that's actually a really good question. It, there's a first threshold is a, a size threshold for structures under two hundred square feet. We don't require a building permit. Um, and the Connex issue has come up in a, in a number of different ways because of, you know, number one, there's a large supply and we're trying to convert them into something usable. Uh, and we're fortunate that the building code council has made some changes to actually give us the ability to approve. Uh, the use of those things in particular, in terms of how they're used, if they're bigger than two hundred square feet, we have different requirements. And if they're going to be a habitable space, we have different requirements. But I think there, there's enough in place for us to have some flexibility within protecting life and safety, uh, which is again, is the primary concern. Uh, and also obviously not to create an issue with a gigantic building, not say quote-unquote greenhouse that dwarfs the neighborhood. But there's a lot of other things that come into play in that. But I, 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 you know, from the practical standpoint, if somebody comes in with a great design and says, we want to do this ADU that's already constructed completely off-site and all we have to do is get a crane to lower it over the back and save all this money carrying everything to the backyard, et cetera, et cetera. You know, we want to look at ways that we can ma- make that happen.
I think the challenge, and I get it, is when someone's working with the city and wants to do everything and is transparent and accountable. And then you see other properties, one on rural road where there's a ton of Connex boxes. You have other people that are violating code violations and you see that, you don't see behind the scenes and the work with code enforcement, all that stuff. You just hear, no, not right now or not what you're presenting from the city. But yet you see all these other examples of, well, how is that allowed? But I can't do this, right? Like, how do you juggle all of that?
Yep. And I think that is definitely something that the council can weigh into in terms of how they want to approach code enforcement in a different model than we're handling right now. So.
Thank you both. I appreciate it.
Yeah. All right. I hope we're doing okay on time. Uh, I do want to be, I love the conversation and I, I haven't gotten to talk to, uh, you all in a while. So, um, we're going to move on to, uh, comments received from the planning commission. Um, at our last two planning commission meetings, uh, we discussed housing and the displacement analysis report and staff heard the following. Who are we planning for? What are the needs and sizes of households and what size and type of housing is needed? I understand that the housing element might be a little data-heavy and technical. So they really, they were asking us to maybe try to create more of a story with that data. And so in this time between now and the end of the month, um, as long as I can get the development code, draft development code done, I will try to maybe create more of a story, um, kind, uh, digest the data and, uh, maybe help paint a better picture or uh, explain what that means for Tom Water versus just numbers and state requirements. Um, the element should tell a story between the relationship between jobs, childcare and housing affordability. I think that's a good point when we're looking at how does the housing element relate to the land use, our economic development plan, our transportation plan. Everything is intertwined. Um, so hopefully when we have our draft use, our, uh, introduction to the comprehensive plan and our user guide, it can help tell that story, how everything is related and what Tom Water will look like, uh, the next, for the next twenty years. The element should explain the housing data and what it looks like or means for the community outside of a table. Uh, explore the upstream causes of the housing crisis. Identify and explore the causes of trends such as demographics. Why is the population older? Why are there more homeowners than renters within the city of Tom Water? Update the economic development plan to help inform housing decision and trends. And different housing types are needed for life cycle aging and elderly care. So it was really great feedback, really good questions. I will admit, because there was so many requirements, state requirements and checklist items and legislation getting passed, I feel like, uh, more of the creative side of the housing element, um, it seems less creative because of all the requirements, because of all the legislation. So, um, it probably is very data-heavy and intensive. But again, we need to make sure at the end of the day that we can submit our housing element to Commerce and making sure that we're meeting state requirements. Um, I, so keeping that in mind, we are trying our best. And on June tenth, Brad presented to City Council, uh, the housing element update. Um, and I read through the notes and I got to watch the meeting and I appreciate the feedback and also the comments received, uh, via the draft elements when those were sent out. Um, I appreciate the time. I know it's, it's a lot of information, a lot of data to get through and a lot of, a lot of updates required. So, um, I'm going to try to summarize, uh, what I got from those meeting notes and, um, so create generational wealth by providing homeownership opportunities targeted to those with a lower AMI. Most affordable housing currently is apartments. Create opportunities to expand the level of homeownership beyond the traditional single-family homes. Broaden housing types within the city promote cottage housing and demonstration projects. How do we prevent sprawl into the county for multifamily development? Address infrastructure such as sidewalks, sewer and transportation and highlight particular areas of concern. Incentivize and prioritize collaboration with local developers, the private sector, nonprofits, uh, service and housing providers in the community to address housing and schedule an opportunity for council to discuss perspectives and feedback on the draft housing element. And then, um, I mentioned earlier that I provided in the packet, uh, how I was tracking comments and how they were incorporated into the draft goals, policies and, uh, draft implementation action items. Uh, not as fancy as, um, some of the other elements, but this is what worked for me. And so this is kind of showing my work, how I'm incorporating those, uh, comments, uh, into the goals, policies and action items. And if we have time, again, I do want to be respectful. I know there's a, there's another item after mine. Um, I am open to any, any further discussion and questions, um, on the housing element. If I missed anything, if there's any last notes, anyone, uh, wants to provide.
Any additional questions?
I have a question.
Councilmember Kathy?
Thank you. Um, Erica, it's the, the people who were, who were part of your, um, you know, groups and got together and how we gathered all this information. Is there something similar, uh, about the people who are making these suggestions and who are digging into this? Or do they come from a variety of, of housing or, um, employment or whatever? Or are they just our standard, you know, middle-of-the-road, living comfortably, white people from Tom Water?
Oh, okay. I think I, I understand what you're implying. Um, I tried my best to reach out to, uh, other community members, uh, the BIPOC community, um, renters. Uh, the primary stakeholder group, uh, was kind of focused, uh, around providing housing in some sort of aspect or a professional aspect. I mean, we had the school district. We had together, we had, uh, the food bank, we had religious organizations, we had manufactured, we did have manufactured home, our community members very involved. Um, we had a lot of great discussions and, uh, stakeholder input engagement with them. I did attend, um, a Juneteenth event, so I did try to network, um, at the city of Lacey. Uh, it, but again, I think it's not for a lack of trying, it's accessibility and people's schedules and the time it takes to be involved. Uh, we did try to make ourselves available as much as possible. Um, and that is something that through this process we did recognize is where we should focus our efforts. And that is the engagement, the discussions, uh, with, um, more community members, the ones that we aren't hearing from, that is something we are going to continue to work on, not just with this element and the update, but moving forward with development code, uh, with my position, uh, looking at opportunities to create more relationships and, um, how to be more involved. So, yeah, that is definite, that's a great question and thank you for asking. Um, yeah.
I didn't ask it to be critical at all and to say that we didn't get a good cross-section of our people here in Tom Water. I think it's just, we have to recognize, uh, that's who we are. And, uh, so when we've got people thinking about it, we have a lot of people who, uh, have not experienced the kind of thing maybe we're trying to take care of here or, um, have always been able to afford a roof over their head. Uh, and, and things like that, you know, we're not, we're not dealing with a lot of, low-income desperate people who, they don't have the time, they don't have the energy, they don't have, they, they don't have the resources and they have, you know, you can just think that way. So I, I think that you have done an excellent job in, in gathering our community information, putting it together. And I think that you encourage people to, to speak up, you know, say what you think, uh, Uh, how, how could that work? So a lot of this is uh, thanks to you and how you're doing your job. So I appreciate it a lot. I, I love the because I've lived in other cities where, you know, there's always some of the questions that are the same, and then there are always some unique to where you are. So, yeah. I have one quick question you can just answer yes or no. Did, did much come up in talking about this, about how to do um, you know, housing and building and codes and all that and the environment? Conservation? Uh, any of that kind of thing overlap?
Um, I think we got a lot of uh, comments and participation and, and concerns with that through the other elements. It, they are all related and there is um, I, I would I think a lot of those comments regarding the environment and balancing, um, those comments are received. It is about housing, but they were received through the other elements and that kind of public engagement process. Um, there is definitely concern with balancing, wanting to maintain the rural look of Tom Water. Um, but again, we, we're not housing developers, but we need to allow for, plan and accommodate higher densities. Um, but yeah, I think a lot of, so yes, we have, but it's also been through the other elements. If I hope, so hopefully that answers your question.
It does. The thing, I just wondered if it spontaneously came up. So thanks for all your work.
Yep. And um, sorry, I do not have a next step slides, but um, right now we are in the final stages, our public engagement process never truly over, but the public comment period with the draft has been posted online. Um, we did ask that comments were received by July eleventh, but I am open to receiving more. We have the com plan email. Please feel free to reach out to me through the com plan email, through Brad. Um, with any questions, I am working on finalizing the draft technical document and goals and policies. Hopefully by the end of the month so that we can be ready uh, for adoption because we, our adoption date is December thirty first of twenty twenty five, along with the draft development code update and design review guidelines. So a lot of housing related updates. Um, and yeah, so thank you for your time. It was so nice to see everyone. I hope you're having a great summer. Thank you.
Thank you. You too.
Great. Thank you, Erica. Any last questions before Erica leaves? No, I think that's very comprehensive. Thank you so much. All right. Our next item on our agenda is discussion of resolution R twenty twenty five dash zero one two, which is the Purple Heart uh, city designation. And uh, Jason Westenstein is going to go ahead and present. So go ahead, Jason.
Okay. Hello, Mayor and members of the council. For the record, I'm Jason Westenstein, Communications Manager for the city of Tom Water. And I'm bringing an item I think is beneficial to our community and has actually a lot to do with what we're just talking about is making the place a more welcoming place for everyone. Resolution twenty twenty five dash twelve seeks to designate the city of Tom Water as a Purple Heart City. Uh, this resolution and the Purple Heart designation that it would produce honors the bravery and the sacrifice of military personnel who have been wounded or killed in action. The Purple Heart designation would demonstrate support for a community of veterans and military families throughout our region. Uh, why should we be a Purple Heart City? It's consistent. The resolution builds upon efforts to create a community where people feel that they belong, where they can find a place. There's also a community present here that could benefit from this recognition and data from the Washington Department of Veterans Affairs shows that many veterans stay in Thurston County after their service. There are also active duty people here in, in, in this county, thirty-three percent of active force of JBLM lives off base and in Thurston County. And council members, city employees, the community at large, recognize veterans and military families as a distinctive part of our vibrant community. And how do we get to this resolution? Uh, I think we heard council members' interest in the Purple Heart City designation. I have to say that I think within the first three weeks that I was here with the city of Tom Water, I um, I, I heard some really passionate um, uh, pleas for this to happen from Councilmember Jefferson and, and reasoned arguments for this. And I'm, I was taken with that, we got to get this done. So we connected with national and regional chapters of the Military Order of the Purple Heart to learn how to gain this designation. Mayor delivered a proclamation and we invited the veteran community to that proclamation as a means to fulfill requirements for the city designation. And a lot of them showed up. I think a lot that filled the room. And um, from here, we would just need to do a few things to attain the designation and maintain it in good standing. We'd need a resolution from the city council to indicate council support for this. And we should, it's not an absolute requirement, but, but we should continue to recognize National Purple Heart Day each August seventh from here forward. I don't know why we wouldn't. Um, and we should also post signage recognizing the designation in the city. And then how does this fit our strategic goals? The designation supports our policy to build a community recognized for quality, for compassion, for humanity. And the resolution recognizes the benefit of creating a welcoming community consistent with the strategic priority. It's one way to always remember the sacrifices of service members and their families in support of our freedoms. And those, that's, that's the short presentation. I'm not seeking any action today, recognizing council's preference to avoid taking action during work sessions. I'm just seeking your agreement to place the resolution on the September second council consideration calendar. And welcome any questions you might have.
Councilmember Dahlhoff?
Thanks, Mayor. Jason, I was, you know, in the packet it says, no, like, you know, small investments of time and resources. I'm just wondering, you know, our budget reflects our priorities. So how where, where would this be in our budget? How do we acknowledge that this is a priority? Like, where will we go to figure out how much this would cost?
Well, yeah, and I, I think, I think a lot of it would be worked in, right? I, I think this is an excellent question, Councilmember Dahlhoff. I, I think um, you know, taking the time to recognize people, make sure that they get out there and social media and things like this. This is part of the regular job, the regular workflow, right? The signage requirements are, uh, my estimate based on talking to the P- Purple Heart folks was two hundred to two hundred and fifty dollars for signage. So this is something that will have to be figured out over time in terms of that financial element. But the finance, financial aspect isn't giant. So you wouldn't see a giant purple heart like on the, the budget, but
I'm thinking like a line item for designations, right? Like we used to have the Tom Water Safe. I know I want to bring that. I would like that program to come back. So as we move forward, could there be a line item for designations to show that staff are supported to work on the designation? What are those elements to do that? Just, just a thought of how do we showcase? And I, I think that's a record for Lisa Parks showing her face after I make a comment.
And I, and I would say that I, I think that that, that conversation is beyond the scope of this presentation, but also in the scope of municipal city administration working together on the planning process moving forward. And then I will definitely allow anybody who wants to talk more about that, that has more knowledge about that.
I'm in support and I just like it to be acknowledged somewhere noted that when we make designations, that it is supported and it's documented in some capacity in our budget. So when we're not here and future councils and execs say, oh, we have these designations, there's F T Es and time required to do that. That's all I'm looking for. Total support, total support.
And um, and just jumping in, so um, by virtue of an actual resolution, a resolution is the adoption by the city council of the policy of the city of Tom Water. And so um, that establishes that directive moving forward until unless there's some change or change or repealing of that particular resolution. In terms of budgeting, um, requirements or budgeting for specific activities. Um, the strategic plan helps us with budgeting. The um, requirements of typical like maintenance and repair um, uh, influences the budgeting process. Uh, so there are lots of factors that go into um, helping us figure out where we might identify or uh, incorporate the, the needs for this signage uh, that could be a part of this Purple Heart uh, designation. And I hope that answered your question, Councilmember.
Thanks. I would just like to see uh, more clarity on what other designations we have that we would include Purple Heart. I'd just like to see that somewhere documented. So thank you, Lisa. Appreciate it.
Yeah.
Great. Any other questions? All right. So we will be having this under council consideration at our next council meeting next week. So uh, I'm uh, very happy that this will be moving it forward. So Councilmember Van Hooft.
I'm just wondering, so is, this will be put on our consent calendar?
No consideration.
Okay, okay. Good. Lessons learned from the last time. Right.
Yeah. And, and every committee always makes a determination of its consideration. Uh, and anything on, under consideration, uh, consent can be pulled to consideration. So all right. All right. So we will be seeing that under uh, council consideration next uh, council meeting. All right. So now we're at uh, Mayor City Administrator Report. So we'll start out with um, Administrator Parks.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to share with council members. Um, the uh, we, we received a voicemail message uh, that was shared uh, with um, Steve Craig, our operations manager, received a voicemail message that was shared with uh, Dan Smith, our director, and it, it was a kudos for three people in our operations department and our water department. Uh, Mike Erickson, Jeff Query and Shannon Geary. Um, and I wanted to share the, the voicemail. It's quick. Um, this is a woman who lives on Capitol Boulevard. She said, uh, she was calling to tell Steve how pleased she has been with the help that she received from Shannon, Mike and Jeff. She says, I was going through a very difficult time with a homeless person who had turned my water faucet on outside and left it running. And I had excellent service from all three of them. So I just wanted to you know, you to know that they all exhibited excellent customer service. And I so appreciate that, especially in today's world. So uh, good news from the water department. I wanted to share that. Um, we'll have some hiring uh, news for you here in the next several uh, days and weeks. Uh, we've been successful in making some really great hires and we'll um, uh, announce those as we get uh, closer and hopefully we'll be able to bring some of those people in to meet you. And then just a quick reminder, the third of the fourth, um, uh, third, the third occurrence of the craft concert series is this Thursday um, from six to seven thirty and the theme is sizzling symphony and the artist is the dirty cello. So uh, just a quick note on that front. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. And I don't have anything additional at the moment. Councilmember Dahlhoff?
Thank you, Mayor. I just had a question for you and Administrator Parks. When I was out of the country, there was notification that a former mayor of Tom Water had passed and I'm wondering, um,
Yes, I just heard about that today. Yeah, I just heard about that today. Sometimes it's really hard to keep up on social media and that and our uh, uh, communication staff will be posting uh, information about that on our website or on our social media. Uh, and so we will be honoring that and also trying to be somewhat respectful of the family of how much, you know, to intrude and all of that. Um, and then uh, I think the memorial service was posted uh, timed. So anyone who wishes to attend, I'm sure we would encourage.
Is Tom Water going to coordinate at least someone from the city to give our condolences? That would be awesome.
Yep.
Yeah, Jason, Jason um, is reaching out to the, the family through the funeral home to um, to ensure that we're being respectful and um, and uh, as well as um, uh, commemorating uh, him and his service to the city of Tom Water.
So are we not saying who it was?
Oh, uh, it was uh, former mayor of Pete uh, Fletch before Ralph Oscar? One right before Ralph Oscar. He was eighty-eight. And I'm trying to remember the years he was there. I think it was ninety to ninety-three. I just off the top of my head, I think that was when he was uh, mayor. So yeah. So, all right. There's no other business. We will go ahead and adjourn for the evening and we will see everyone next week. Thank you.